The North Las Vegas City Council welcomes you to its virtual city council meeting this evening. There are two public forums set aside for public comments, one at the beginning of the meeting and one at the end. When I call upon you to speak, I request that you will limit your comments no more than three minutes and that you avoid repetition. Madam City Clerk, are we in compliance with the Nevada Open Meeting Law?
Mayor, yes, we are in compliance.
Great. Tonight, we have the opportunity to have the pledge, the invocation party given by Mayor Pro Tem Barone. All of would be the fledge of allegiance led by Councilman Churchill. Would you please rise? Councilman?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is a little bit unexpected honor, but I guess I'll do my best. Would you all please bow your head and drum a little prayer? Dear Lord, we thank you for again allowing us to meet and come together to do the very best we can in these very difficult times in which, of course, our city and our residents are subjected to pressures, of course, that are affecting all the people of our world and, of course, all the people who are suffering economically, medically, and at times spiritually. We hope that you will bring our city your blessings and you allow us here on the city council to make the very best decisions possible to bring a release and to bring good government here to the city council. And we ask you this in all candor and with all blessings for our city. Thank you very much and amen.
Thank you.
Amen. While we're standing, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate you. I think we're going to start calling you Father Barone instead of Councilman Barone. That was a beautiful prayer. We're going to move on to the public forum. This is a time set aside to comment on posted agenda items. This public forum excludes discussions on public hearing items, which will be heard later separately. So if you want to speak on any item, this is under consent agenda. Business or ordinance final action, now is that time. Madam City Clerk, do you have any callers or written comments for this public forum?
Mayor, we had one written comment in regards to item 21, the bike ordinance. That was in opposition. You've received a copy of that written comment. And we do have one person, we now have, we have one person on the line. I will bring that person in. Rick Skipton.
All right. I want to make, for the record, Councilman Barone, Councilman Churchill has received 39 complaints on the animal issue. He will be discussing that at the, at the end of the, the meeting here. We had two of them that were slander issues. They wanted us to check into. That's Councilman Barone will look at those. And the last one was somebody who was against maybe the bike ordinance or wanted to make a point on it. And Councilman Black will make a point. Yeah. So when we get to those items, gentlemen, get ready to cover them. So Catherine, go ahead and have the other person come on.
Thank you, Mayor. Hello, caller. State your name and address for the record.
My name is Rick Skipton, 1841 Luna Vista Place, North Las Vegas.
Welcome, Rick. We are glad to have you with us today. Go ahead, Ben.
Thank you. I'm a North Las Vegas resident and also on the board of directors of the Southern Nevada Bicycle Coalition. I'm also on the Southern Nevada Health and Streets Coalition. The Coalition is a nonprofit profit grassroots organization. It's the voice of bicycling in the Southern Nevada. We strive to make biking better for everyone, advocating for safer roads, better trails, and seek for more bicycling opportunities in Southern Nevada. We aim to bring riders together to support issues and connect the community through cycling. We support cycling for many important and pragmatic reasons, including it makes you healthier, increases your brain power, it's easier on your body physically than other forms of exercise such as running or walking, and finally, it's a legitimate, environmentally free and cost-effective method of transportation. An activity you'll be able to do for the rest of your life and reduce stress and produces no carbon footprint, besides its fun. You may have noticed the explosion of bike sales in North Las Vegas since March. Many retailers are sold out. This points to a must increase in interest in biking by your constituents. Something to keep in mind as you create strategies, planning, and policy. I first brought the bicycle riding on sidewalks issue to Councilman Churchill three years ago, and I've been pestering him about it ever since. I was surprised to find that North Las Vegas is out of step with other local communities by outlawing bike riding on sidewalks, and at the same time, had done very little to enable safe bike riding by implementing more bike lanes and multi-use paths. Changing this ordinance is a great step in the right direction for the community. It will enable children to legally and safely ride to school and all the rest of us a place to ride when riding on the street is simply too dangerous. We've taken many other steps to address bicycle safety, and I commend you for that effort, such as establishing a complete street policy, sponsoring and adopting the 2019 North Las Vegas Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan, implementing bike lanes on many streets in the northwest part of our city, and approving pedestrian biking bridge project for Craig and Anne Road, just to name a few. But we can't rest in our laurels. The recently announced Camino El Dorado Resilience Project was first proposed without adding bike lanes. We still lack a bicycle champion on the North Las Vegas staff, and too many roads and trails lack basic maintenance to keep them usable, such as obstacles in bike lanes on city streets, lane line maintenance, and wash trail landscaping. In closing, we respectfully recommend you adopt this ordinance change. We look forward to working with the city of North Las Vegas on future projects and events. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. If you'll stay on the phone, we're going to have item 21. Dale Dapper is going to give a presentation on that. Just want you to hear that, okay?
Sure, thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Appreciate you. Catherine, Madam City Clerk, do we have anyone else who would like to speak to the council at this time?
Mayor, we do not have any more callers on the line for public forum.
Thank you. We will close the first public forum and moving on to the agenda. Mr. City Manager?
Item one, approve city council regular meeting agenda for September 2nd, 2020. Mayor Council, staff recommends approval of the agenda.
Thank you. Counsel, any comments or questions on the motion to approve the agenda? If not, the chair will take that motion?
Goin Brown, you can approve.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Lee, aye.
Barone, aye.
Churchill, aye.
Goin Brown, aye.
So that item is approved. We're going to go in alphabetical order, okay? We got a lot of Bs and Cs here, so, all right. Thank you very much. Like I say, we have a motion, we've already moved to approve the agenda. Moving on to the consent agenda.
Mayor Council, the consent agenda consists of items two through sixteen, and it's our recommendation to approve it as public.
Thank you very much. Counsel, any comments, questions? If not, the chair will take a motion?
Goin Brown, so please.
We have a motion. Lee, aye.
Barone, aye.
Black, aye.
Churchill, aye.
Goin Brown, aye.
You got a black eye, huh, Scotty?
Yes, sir, always.
Always. You're always going to be our favorite black eye then. Madam City Clerk, oh, go ahead. Moving on to future public hearing dates.
Item number 17, set date on any appeal filed or require public hearings from the city claiming commission meeting.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, we direct you to so set any hearing dates as necessary.
Mayor, so noted. Just for the record, we do have a late caller for public forum, so they maybe have to hold on until the second public forum.
Yeah, we'd love to hear from them, so we'll remember to bring her up or him up. Moving on to the public hearings.
Item number 18, ratify the 2020, 2021 agreements between the city of North Las Vegas, Nevada, and the North Las Vegas Police Officers Association for the period of July 1, 2020 through June 30th, 2021. Mayor and council, this is, now we're kind of winding down the rest of our collective bargaining agreements. First, I just want to thank our team that did work on this, for doing this, and actually going to put it in place so that we could focus on, on the pandemic and focus on giving more data and information back on the economy as moving to next year and begin negotiations again. Year over year, the C-Tax for the last four months, March through June, is down 24.8%. Given that C-Tax is our largest revenue sources for the general fund, that this drop is significant and will impact our operations throughout the city. Based on our revised, the revised revenue projections from the local government financing working group, we estimate that the citywide revenue decline will be $76.4 million lower than what we had estimated pre-COVID. As you notice, it's getting a little bit better, but better is relative because it's still $76 million that were, that were in the hole, if you will. These projections continue to change as the pandemic continues. And that's, you know, for that very reason, the dynamic nature of this and not having all the information is one of the reasons that Mayor and Council directed us this year to just, to hold flat and have some concessions from the unions. We're really waiting to gather more information before we went, like more drastic with anything. In response to the ongoing crisis, as you all know, management's postponed or canceled numerous projects within the CIP and we've been to saw hiring freezes and taking other measures to save dollars and let the budget stretch the budget out. The 2021 budget approved by council did not include any cost of living adjustments or base wage increases for the, for the employee groups. Really, at this time, we're still very concerned about the long-term viability of the tax base. We've done a very good job in the city of diversifying, which has created dollars that we didn't have during the last recession. But that being said, we, such a dynamic situation, it's changing all the time. We still believe, and all the projections show nationally and locally, that our economy is going to be slower to recover than other places. We're starting to see some of the numbers creep back up at the parents, international air force, but still, we're, you know, we're like 90% less than what we normally are. For these reasons, we've, we've asked our collective bargaining groups to work with us to help shore up and close this revenue, revenue gap. The agreement for you today is for the POA, does exclude the 52 correction officers, which we hope to bring before you guys the next council meeting. And the budget annual salary for benefits for POA is approximately $60 million a year. This represents 275 employees that are covered by the agreement. The agreement allows for us to keep base wages flat, which is consistent with the 2021 budget. In addition, the agreement allows us to make changes to the city's premium medical insurance plan, which currently has approximately 395 participants. So with the concessions that are before you in this agreement today, it represents $238,000 savings per year. Additionally, some of the things that are in concessions agreement is we went through the contracts in light of some of what's going on nationally in regards to police, police reform. We have made some changes in the contract that are, through this city attorney's office, that these will create some higher level of accountability and will make sure that that, that all it can be, rest assured, that, that our police officers, who are the best in the valley, some of the best in the country, that their contract reflects that and that there is a discipline process in some of those, some of the different areas that we were concerned about in the contract have been changed so that we can make sure that, that our, our police officers are held accountable for what, for services to the community. So that, if there's any questions, but that was the basis of the presentation I need to make towards the financial conditions of the contract.
Thank you very much. Counsel, any comments or questions? I will have, I have one question, but I'll wait, maybe you ask, ask it. Is there any questions or comments?
I'm fine, Mayor. Councilman Churchill is fine.
We do appreciate a great police department, a great police chief, Mr. City Manager, and the relationship that we have now with our leadership team. This deficit you were talking about, did you say 79 million?
76.4.
Does that include the sewer and water abeyments and, I mean, advances and stuff like that we've done? Or is that just on money that was coming into the city that has stopped coming?
Yeah, so all this is, is this is purely the tax dollars.
Okay.
And what we have projected based on year-over-year increases and based on year-over-year performance, we had projected a certain number. And right now, we're $76 million off of that number. So really, what it takes to norm, to do the normal operations in the city over the next two years, we're $76 million. Based on the actual revenues that we have coming in from C-Tax and other things, we're $76 million short.
Wow, okay. And, um, and how hard to make that up. It's going to be a few years, there's no doubt.
Yeah, I mean, one thing to remember is we were able to make up $156 million structural deficit. But that was a structural deficit, that was over five-year period.
Yeah.
This is a very, this is a high amount for a very short period of time, and it's pretty unprecedented. So until we get all the, a little bit better financial data, a little bit better understanding of what, which way the curve's going, how gradual the slope is, how dramatically, how sharp the slope is, then we'll have a better idea. And that's why this number, if you recall, it began at $107 million. So we've gotten a little bit better, but it's still very significant.
Yeah. Well, I appreciate the leadership of the POA and you, your team working together. Moving on, moving forward. We'll, we'll pull out of this, I guess, faster than anybody else I know, because Gene and Gavin, economic development's going to work a little, a little hard out to make sure we replace that money. Counsel, is there any other comments or questions? If not, the chair will take a motion?
Mayor, I'd just like to say, I, I want to echo, of course, you know, the town from Churchill and, and your, I want to again thank, you know, the, the leadership there on the POA side to work with us to come with an equitable solution in this really, in these really uncertain times. And that I think we've done, the city manager's done a fantastic job working with them in ensuring the, the long-term viability, you know, of being able to provide these police services and keep it within a reasonable amount that our, that our, that a city can bear. And unless someone else wants to do it, I'd like to make a motion to approve it.
Mayor, we-
Thank you. Well, thank you for, yes, ma'am.
Um, this is a public hearing item. I don't have any callers on the line, but-
So let me open the public comment officially, and you have no one to speak to us right now?
Mayor, no, I have no callers online or written comments on this item.
Okay. I wasn't ready to go there, but I actually threw that motion in real quick and it sounded like a good one. So we will close public comment. And Councilman Barone, you want to restate your motion?
Yes, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve the contract here with the POA.
Thank you. We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Lee, aye.
Barone, Barone, aye.
Councilman Black, yes.
Councilman Churchill, yes.
Goin Brown, yes.
It's unanimous. Thank you very much, Counsel. And thank you so much for our wonderful police officers. I like that word better, Scott, yes, than aye. That's a good one. I like that. Moving on, I got my mask on here. Moving on to businesses.
Item number 19, passing top resolution number 2655, a resolution standing for solidarity with Nevada Legislature condemning historical discrimination against residents of North Las Vegas and Nevada and urging actions to address the public health crisis caused by systemic racism and greatly magnified by the COVID-19 pandemic in Nevada. Mayor and Council, there's one small change. The resolution is published online in the whereas section. The number 52 should actually be replaced with the number 70. And that just demonstrates the fact that our community, it's, the community of color is impacted greater than anywhere else. I think the resolution generally speaks for itself. I want to first thank Senator Spearman for her leadership. This is a resolution that mirrors much of what Senator Spearman put before the legislature to, to really alert the state to this challenge. It's something that we've been dealing with here in the state, here in North Las Vegas throughout the entire pandemic. It was exacerbated whenever the decision was made by the governor's office to not, not give us our CARES dollars allocation that came from the federal government. And from that, that Thursday to today, it's something that we've been working to really help people understand that you, that is, that is the very definition of institutional racism, by not taking a community of color and not providing them direct allocations from the federal government. And then you have a community, for example Reno, which is high 80% Caucasian, they get, they have $47 million. It just comes to them in a check. And that they're able to spread that out throughout their community and use it for, for services within the city to deal with COVID. That is the very example of where a city like North Las Vegas had to, we have to make up $47 million on, on another city. And that's the kind of historical institutional challenges that communities of color continually face. We see it again whenever it comes to CCSD's rollout of, of a plan to provide distance learning, which is a response that's happened nationally to COVID. It's a very reasonable response. It's something that they needed to do based on the challenges they were facing. But it doesn't change the fact that that is a program that will be a huge disadvantage for, for our residents. It is, the distance learning is something that is not successful within minority communities. It's not successful within cities that struggle financially and they're not affluent, and their ability to not only have the device, but not have the devices, but also even with the device, not have reliable high-speed internet access that allows them to, to get on the classes. In the shadow of City Hall, we see every day, there's a bus that's parked out there from CCSD. It's a yellow bus that has Wi-Fi on it. And it's sitting on a black laptop in Smith's parking lot in the, in the heat of the day. And that's a solution for our kids. They expect for our kids within a 30, 300-meter radius to come and to sit on the blacktop with their devices and take their online classes. That, while it's a solution, it's not a solution for our community. And that's the very definition of how some communities are treated different than others. And this pandemic, as Senator Spearman has pointed out, this, this pandemic is a health crisis. And it's a health crisis for, for communities of color more than it is for other communities. So this resolution is to stand in solidarity with the Nevada Legislature and recognize them for their efforts because we're on the front lines and we see this happening on a, on a daily basis. And I think that the time is coming where, where thankfully in the public conscious, there's a conversation about this. And I believe within the city of North Las Vegas, we are going to, at, at every turn, we will, we will fight whenever there is this kind of systemic historical discrimination against our, against our residents.
Thank you very much. You know, you mentioned community of color, and I know that people think, oh, it's just a bunch of those people over there. But really, we're proud of this. We love being an integrated city. We have a great lifestyle over here. We're proud of having everybody who lives in North Las Vegas be a part of our community. And, and also proud of Senator Spearman. She's been a great advocate for North Las Vegas. And whenever we need help at the legislature or she brings ideas to us, you know, she's been a great leader. And any community that's going to win has got to have a senator such as her and the assembly members that we have. And we have some great leaders in our community. So I applaud Senator Spearman, and I'm proud of being the city we are. But when you're economically a little bit sometimes disadvantaged and you end up getting disregarded, I don't know exactly how that happened, but will this resolution, number 2655, this city manager, will this go to the legislature or to the executive branch? Where does it go from here?
You know, it's something that I believe it'll be put out in the media. We are going to send it to, to the legislature. If you recall, the county, they, they gave us half of the CARES allocation we should have received from the federal government from their own dollars, which, by the way, they use those dollars to help communities of color, to help our community as well as our region, which is a minority region. We are going back to the interim finance committee of the legislature to not only get the other half of the dollars that residents of North Las Vegas should have received based on the federal map, but also work with the state to make sure that county gets their dollars back.
Good.
Because county provides services to our residents. And they provide services to, to our communities. They, for example, in testing and things like that, we are the high, we are the epicenter for COVID. And our mortality rates within African-American community and the Spanish community is dramatically higher than it is in, in any other community. So we're going to work with them. We're going to, the legislature will know that this is our support for this. And it goes, as more or less, it's an exhibit of why we should be receiving the federal dollars that we should receive and why we should, you know, continue fighting despite for our residents.
Yeah, I agree with that. And you did bring up something interesting. As the county commission chairman, Kirkpatrick, is a great staunch ally of North Las Vegas, but the whole county, but Henderson and Mesquite and Boulder City, not Las Vegas, but the rest of us are all thankful for the county commission recognizing that we have responsibilities in our community, and they came forth to help us fund them. So we are very proud of our relationship with our, our county commissioners, chair of the county commission, and the other commissioners who supported us on this. Counsel, any comments or questions on this presentation? There will be no vote on this. But, well, there should be a vote on this. Yeah, there should be a vote. So is there any other comments or questions? And the chair will take a motion.
Mayor, I don't have any other comments.
Go ahead.
In our resolution, the first whereas, as it's stated by author and activist Maya Angelo, and she states that prejudice is a burden that confuses the past, the future, and renders the present inaccessible. Until you thoroughly can understand the past about racism and the treatment of people of color and how it is threatening our future, correct right now, and then what is happening in the present, it's hard for you to picture what a person of color goes through. Racism, to me, is just defined as it's a prejudice, it's discrimination, antagonism directed against a person or people on the basis of their particular racial ethnic group. And it's typically of a minority, and it's also a marginalized affect. Within North Las Vegas, like the city manager said, we are the largest minority majority population in the state. And which speaks volumes, that we have a very diverse community here in the city of North Las Vegas. It starts with a conversation. And I think our city has been doing a great job at having that conversation to learn what others are going through. I'm the mother of two black young men, and, you know, my day starts out with a text or a call every single day to see how they are. And sad to say, you know, did everything go okay? Or if you get pulled over by the police, you need to do this, don't do that. I have to have that conversation, and they are adults. But as a mom, I still feel like I need to say that to them. My youngest son wanted to rent a U-Haul to drive from the furniture back to LA. As a young black male, I said, you are not allowed to do that if you get pulled over in that highway. I don't know what could happen because you are a young black man. Don't know what, if you got pulled over, are you going to be questioned? Are you going to be searched? So those kind of things. I just did not want to take the chance at that time because it was right in the middle of when all riots began. I'm proud that our city has had many, many peaceful protests, and the word is feeding out. And as a community, if we stick together, we have those conversations, we check on one another, and we realize we have to treat people with respect, treat people fairly, treat people the same, because the Black Lives Matter movement is so strong out there. And to understand the philosophy behind it, if you understand that, if you become part of it, then you will be part of the solution.
Pam, I appreciate that. And you, you led the charge with the city manager to go to the county and, and made this happen for our committee. I'd like to hear what the other council people have to say, and then have you make the motion. Would that be okay?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay. Any other council members would like to make a discussion into this before we call for a motion?
Yeah, may I ask you, allow me. Of course, you know, recently I've returned to the classroom online because, of course, I still have full employment as a, as a teacher. I got a street rental high school. And I- as a, as a teacher. I got a creative rental high school. And, um, I can firsthand attest as, uh, uh, my recently, uh, related colleague there, Pamela, who of course she recently retired, um, we're, we're looking and we're dealing with firsthand the, uh, what, what the ramifications are of this systemic racism, uh, on, uh, on the children that we teach. Um, you know, uh, we're expected as teachers to, uh, look after the, the, these students who are supposed to be logging on to our class. But I don't have a single class. It's less than, uh, than thirty nine students. And, uh, most of them are about forty five students. But oftentimes I'll have about twenty five percent absenteeism with these, uh, with, with the kids are not able to sign on. And it's real simple. When I call, when I call, I make contact. It's because, uh, 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 again, um, many of, so many of our, our families have not crossed digital divide. They don't have the, the proper technology. They, they, it's, they don't have this, they don't have that, they don't have the access to Wi-Fi. And, um, th- this is a result, you know, uh, uh, of this institutionalized racism that the city manager, what we're, we're referring to. Uh, uh, again, and we, when we have, when we don't have, uh, available, uh, money to, uh, really tackle these challenges that, that exist in, in, in our community. Uh, we've been doing everything that we ca- can to help shore up our businesses here in, uh, and, and many of them, of course, in downtown area that are, uh, businesses, you know, headed by, uh, uh, households, you know, of, of color, uh, uh, small mom and pop or, or organizations here. Um, we're doing everything that we, that we can to help have people, um, stay in, in, uh, in their, uh, in, in their apartments, in their homes. And, but when we don't have the resources that are allocated to us, it is so ironic that, um, that this, uh, idea of mixed race racism goes right all the way up and, and, um, doesn't allow, uh, people who, uh, are supposed to be tasked of looking after and making sure that everything's equitable in our community. And still, this, this message still has not fully spoke to them. And to, to think that there are communities across the state of Nevada that, you know, they're, they're majority Caucasian communities and they're getting more COVID money than our city is. And I'm talking relatively wealthy communities, but those counties who have been allocated money. Uh, and, and we've been allocated nothing at this point from the state. And it, it is, um, very disappointing. And, um, I really, uh, I, I applaud all the help, of course, that our, uh, our, our state leaders, uh, in the legislature. And of course, you know, uh, I applaud the, uh, Carson Commission for helping us understanding just what it means to be here in, in North Las Vegas. And of course, it's very well documented, uh, in, in a recent newspaper article that eight nine L three O was one of the top two least prepared, uh, communities, or parts of the community with the most infections and least amount of resources to deal with it. And, you know, um, it was, it was, uh, I, um, I, I, again, I, I, uh, I, I'm very thankful to all the friends in the community and thankful to all of our staff that's done so much to alleviate the, the suffering. That's very evident, you know, uh, you can see it every day, uh, i- i- and, and my neighbors in our community. And, um, I, um, I, I'm looking very much forward, you know, to, uh, to this, uh, resolution passing. And, um, with that, uh, I, I'll feed it to anyone who else wants to make a comment.
Thank you. Any of us would like to speak on this issue? Seeing none. The motion, Pam, I'm gonna ask you to make is to pass it up, resolution two six five five as amended. That should be the motion.
Hey, mayor, I'd be happy to make a motion to adopt resolution two six five five as amended.
Thank you very much. We have a motion. Council, please say your vote. Lee, aye.
Barone, aye.
Councilman Black, yes.
Councilman Churchill, yes.
Goins Brown, aye.
You, we have approved of you unanimously. Thank you very much. Uh, thank you, Mr. City Manager for bringing us forth.
Moving on to item twenty, adopt business impact statement regarding ordinance number three zero one nine, amending title five, chapter five point two six, liquor regulations and licenses in municipal code addressing impact businesses from proposed regulations and licensing fees.
Mark, are you there? Councilman, I mean, Director Jordan, did you have anything to say on this?
Well, real briefly, uh, this business impact statement, what staff is proposing to do is add definitions and regulations and fees for brew pubs, breweries, craft distilleries, estate distilleries, instructional wine-making facilities and liquor manufacturers. Uh, we're basically, uh, bringing our current title five in, into alignment with, uh, the other jurisdictions in the valley and, uh, that these classifications would be consistent with that and also expand our economic, uh, activity within the city. And what started this is we did have a brewery pub that came before the planning commission and that's when we realized we did not have any regulations in title five for this. Uh, we sent this out to approximately three hundred liquor licenses and also posted on the city's website. And we only received three calls and one email and they just were asking for clarification of the proposed ordinance. Otherwise, we have not received any objections or any other concerns regarding what is going to be introduced tonight.
Thank you very much. Counsel, any comments or questions on this? If not, the motion will be to adopt the business statement, impact statement regarding ordinance number three oh one nine. Does everybody have anything to say on this or would you like to make a motion?
Mayor, I'd like to make the motion to pass and adopt ordinance, uh, number three zero three three. I'm sorry, that's the wrong one altogether. I'm so sorry. Please forgive me. Uh,
Three oh, one, one nine.
Three oh one, one nine.
Yeah, you're right.
My motion.
No, we have a, a motion by Councilman Barone. Um, the chair says aye.
Barone, aye. Councilman Black, yes.
Councilman Churchill, yes.
Goins Brown, aye.
We have a unanimous decision. Thank you very much. Moving on to ordinances, final action.
Item number twenty one passed and adopted ordinance number three zero three three, amending title ten, chapter sixty, section one thirty municipal code authorizing the riding bicycle on city sidewalks and providing other matters property related there too.
Thank you very much. Uh, Councilman, uh, Black, you've worked very, very hard on this. I know you're an avid cyclist. And, uh, we want to turn this over to you. I think you have Dale Daffron on the line that's gonna work with you on this. Is that correct?
Yes, mayor, I'm on the line.
Okay. So I'll turn it over to you and Councilman Black.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Go for it, Dale.
You want me to go?
Uh, you can go first.
Okay, sounds good. Well, if you wouldn't mind looking at your packet there in front of you, um, once again, Dale, I guess Dale Daffron for the record. Um, as you may recall, back in, um, February twenty twenty, the council adopted amendments to the comprehensive master plan by updating, um, the open space and transportation elements. And basically that replaced the two thousand and eleven comprehensive trails and bikeway master plan with the North Las Vegas citywide pedestrian and bicycle plan. If you go to page two on your slide. Without going into the great history of the bicycle plan, since it's been previously presented to the council, um, around the end of twenty eighteen, it was designed to be consistent with our complete streets, um, policy, some of our visioning documents and our strategic plan. In addition, the plan also supported, was supported by, uh, many bike enthusiasts and local bike groups. In general, the plan, uh, outlined the comprehensive network of pedestrian bicycle facilities and established some goals and objectives that we could follow as a city. It set a strategy to achieve the goals and also provided some, uh, items they call quick wins in the plan, um, that we could implement within the first six months of the plan. Uh, you can go to slides three, which says how to be successful with the top. So within the plan, a method for prioritizing the projects and ranked the projects using various criteria that were established. In addition, several quick wins, as I mentioned earlier, were identified. So for example, under the quick wins, the need to screen the capital projects for bike opportunities. Um, although we actually do that regularly in our capital improvement plan, I think the council understands the ability for us sometimes to get right away, purchase right away. It's very expensive. In addition, some of the more mature areas were locked in by businesses and streetscape, which doesn't allow us to do much except maybe narrow the travel lanes to achieve some bike lanes. So sometimes that's a little tough to achieve. The second item, number two there, the plan also suggested incorporating a multimodal approach to the CIP project, which currently we're updating our master plan of streets and highways. And we recently received some RTC funding to, um, actually update our master plan. And we're certainly gonna look at, uh, the multimodal component within that transportation plan. And lastly, which is really the focus of today's agenda item is, um, one of the quick wins recommends that we adopt a code that revises the municipal code prohibiting bicycles on sidewalks. Go to your next slide, the one with the, uh, graphical picture there. So why do we really want to allow bicycles on the sidewalks? You really gotta look at some of the data, some of the statistical data that was presented in the plan. The plan pointed out that eighty eight percent of all bicycle collisions occur on roadways without dedicated bike facilities. And you, and if you look at this bicycle facility map here or this bicycle collision map, you look at the yellow square or yellow triangle where it shows where there's been a collision with a bicycle and a vehicle, you can clearly see the relationship between a major roadway and both the east-south direction or east and west directions. You can look at Cheyenne, Alexander, Craig Road and see the multiple collisions there. And although kind of less apparent in the north-south direction, you can look at streets like the Gator and Martin Luther King and communal order, you can see a relationship there, which are, are larger roadways. Further, the plan pointed out that we only have about eleven percent of our arterial and collector streets with dedicated bike lanes. And there's also a huge correlation pedestrian and bicycle collisions. And the plan pointed out that seventy one percent of all collisions between twenty thirteen and twenty seventeen occurred on roadways with posted speed limits above thirty-five miles an hour. If you go to your last slide there, although we currently only have eleven percent of our arterial and collector roadways outfitted with dedicated bike lanes, we do have an excellent array of ADA compliant perimeter and off-site or offset sidewalk areas. So if we utilize these sidewalk areas for bikes, we can separate high-speed traffic from bicycles. We can eliminate some isolated residential areas that are referred to as islands in the plan. And we also provide a better connection between trails and mixed-use pathways throughout the city. Finally, of course, we can, uh, enhance the community health aligned by making it easier and safer to get around the city by bike and hopefully, uh, motivate, motivate some citizens to choose a healthy form of transportation to go to work in their entertainment place. So with that, um, I can answer any question or I recommend that the mayor and council adopt ordinance number three oh three three, authorizing riding bicycles upon city sidewalks.
Thank you. Councilman Black?
Absolutely. Thank you so much for that, Dale. That, that really, uh, kind of sets the, the tone for what we're about to, uh, present to the council. I want to say thank you to my colleagues in the council for, um, entertaining this this evening. You know, there are many reasons why individuals will either ride a bicycle or walk in our community. People do it for recreation, for family fun, uh, for transportation, uh, commuting to work and back or school and back. Of course, there's the exercise component. And, um, if you go right now today, so this morning I rode, rode my bike fifteen miles exclusively on roadways in North Las Vegas in Ward Three, utilizing a good share of the roadways that had bike lanes, uh, which was fantastic. Um, I didn't ride on the sidewalk at all today. However, if I would have, and for the past twenty years since I've lived in Ward Three, um, raising a, a daughter and, and my wife, we violated the law many, many times riding on the sidewalk. And that's unfortunate and it shouldn't be the case. And so I think we're approaching this today. It's really a common sense, um, thing in my opinion, in the, in the opinion of many others, um, that are advocating for safe streets and safe ways to people, for people to navigate, that are navigating outside of a vehicle. So, um, I want to say thank you to Rick Skipton. He called in earlier. He's, uh, with the Southern Nevada Bicycle Coalition. Rick made some really great points to acknowledge that we have come a long way with our complete streets policy, with our comprehensive biking pedestrian plan. Uh, he also indicated that we have a ways to go. And, and I know he is a champion for these matters and will follow us along and support us and help us as we work towards the safest, uh, community possible as it relates to bicycling and pedestrians. He mentioned also the surge in cycling and bicycling purchases. You see people all over riding bikes, the families, to the park, to, to the schools, um, around the neighborhood. And largely, they're already doing this safely by riding on the sidewalk. Unfortunately, it's just illegal. Um, so this really is a common sense approach. To me, it's common courtesy. Um, we have to communicate and we have to continue our effort. I did, we did get one comment from Grant and Patricia Couch, and I just wanted to thank them for, uh, reaching out regarding this ordinance. They, uh, have some concerns relative to riding a bicycle on the sidewalk with pedestrians due to speed, people riding their bikes fast on the sidewalk. And that's where I think common sense and common courtesy comes into play. We can share the sidewalk, uh, as pedestrians and cyclists safely and staying out of the roadways. And also I received a very thoughtful letter from, uh, my friend and colleague, Erin Breen, who's the director of the Vulnerable Road Users Project, uh, part of UNLV's Transportation Research Center. And if you'll bear with me, I just want to read two small excerpts from her letter because it really is, is excellent for what we're talking about here. She says, "The short truth is there is no easy answer to the dilemma of where to safely put people who are traveling outside of a car, pedestrians and cyclists, especially on streets like we build in Southern Nevada, wide, flat, and fast. In my perfect world, we narrow lanes, lower speeds, and add improvements so everyone feels safe using the street and we don't need to change laws." She says, "The short answer, which is what we're trying to do today, is to allow cyclists to legally use the sidewalk for their safety." She says, "I understand it is the most immediate fix." So she's really not asking for us not to pass this ordinance, but what she's asking is that we have an ongoing conversation, looking at building new roads or rehabbing new roads in such a way that speeds are lower, that people, uh, can, um, share the streets together in a safe manner. So I just wanted to thank Erin for her input, Mr. Skipton, uh, Mr. and Miss, uh, Mrs. Couch for sharing their comment. And, uh, I am in full support of this. Are there any other comments? I'd love to hear them.
Um, Pam, Pam, you're gonna be an amateur rider at Christmas time when you get your new bike. Do you think the streets, do you think the streets would be safer when you get a bike, if you're up on the sidewalk?
Um, actually I did do a eight-mile ride a couple of months ago. And it is somewhat intimidating if you're off of a bike trail and you are riding in the street. And I did go onto the sidewalk just to put myself at ease because, uh, people on the roadways, like, like, like the passage that was red, our, our streets are wide and they're flat and they're fast. And people, until they respect the cycling, know the laws, um, I think this is a good solution.
I agree. We looked at the map, Pam. We, we know where you live and there was three accidents right in your street. Um, my gosh. I'm just not sure if that eight-mile ride was beneficial to everybody else, but I'm glad you had a good time. So, taking on you, Pam.
I know. You know where I live. Uh-oh.
So if there's no other, uh, discussion or questions for Director Daffron or the councilman, uh, councilman, you want to make a motion for the record?
I'd be glad to. I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance number three zero three three, allowing the, uh, legal riding of bicycles on city of North Las Vegas sidewalks.
Thank you. We have a motion. Lee, aye.
Barone, aye. Black, aye.
Churchill, yes.
Goins Brown, aye.
We have, uh, a unanimous result on that. Congratulations, Scott. You worked hard on that. Moving on to ordinances, introduction only.
Mayor, council, item twenty-two, introduce ordinance number thirty nineteen, amending title five of the municipal code relating to liquor regulations and licenses by amending chapter five point two six liquor regulations and licenses and providing for other matters property related there too. Item twenty-three, introduce ordinance number thirty thirty-four, an ordinance related to zoning, reclassifying approximately eighteen point three nine plus or minus acres from a C two general commercial district to R three multifamily residential district. of Corley Avenue and Scott Robinson Boulevard, and providing for other matters property related thereto. Item twenty-four, introduce ordinance number thirty thirty-five, an ordinance related to zoning, reclassifying approximately eight point oh-eight plus or minus acres from a MPC-R-Z thirteen master planned community residential up to thirteen D-U slash A-C district to MPC-C-one master planned community neighborhood commercial district, Z-N-O-eight twenty twenty Valley Vista Constant Care, for property located, generally located at northeast corner of Decatur Boulevard and Elkhorn Road, and providing for other matters property related thereto. Item twenty-five, ordinance number thirty thirty-six, ordinance related to zoning, reclassifying approximately nine point four-seven plus or minus acres from an OL open land district to M-two general industrial district, Z-N-O-nine twenty twenty Sloan and Howdy Wells, Howdy Wells, for property generally located at the northeast corner of Howdy Wells Avenue and Sloan Lane, and providing for other matters property related thereto. And item twenty-six, introduce ordinance number thirty thirty-seven, an ordinance related to zoning, reclassifying approximately six point three-seven plus or minus acres in the zoning map of North Las Vegas, from a M-two general industrial district to RCL single-family compact lot residential district, Z-N-ten twenty twenty Azure and Novak, for property located at the southeast corner of Azure Avenue and Novak Street, and providing for other matters property related thereto.
Thank you very much. Moving on to appointments, Councilman Black?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Lee. I am honored to submit Ms. Brittany Pollak to my colleagues on the council today to be appointed to the Parks, Art, Recreation and Culture Advisory Board. Ms. Pollak is a resident of Ward Three and lives in Aliante. She is a fierce advocate for a variety of recreational opportunities for the city of North Las Vegas, both expanding what we currently have and looking at new opportunities down the road. She has great ideas, but not only does she have great ideas, she's willing to put in the work. I consider Ms. Pollak, my interactions with her, a sound leader, and I'm honored to recommend her name for that board.
Thank you. Counselor, any comments, questions? If not, the chair will take the motion to appoint Brittany Pollak, per Councilman Black's recommendation, to the Parks, Recreation, Arts, Recreation and Culture Advisory Board. Councilman, you have, you made the motion, so Lee, aye? Isaac, you there?
Hello?
Black. Black, yes?
Churchill, yes?
Going Brown, aye?
Councilman, I think I heard an aye from you, Verone, is that correct? I think your phone might have messed up, but, well, I heard you say aye, so I'm going to say it's unanimous. Thank you very much, and welcome Ms. Pollak to the city leadership, and we move on to city manager's report.
Just one second, Mayor. We're looking at something.
Just for a second, the manager and the attorney are conferring. Just give us a second here.
Just one quick item, Mayor, council has been brought to our attention that there was inadvertently something that might have been left in the contract that was before you for POA. It's not a, it does not have a financial impact, so it would not change the presentation that was made, or my obligation and interest to make a presentation about the savings in the contract, but there is something that's in there, and we're looking to see if we need to possibly, it's under Article fifteen, is something that was...
We can take a two-minute recess.
Okay.
We're just going to take a two-minute recess while the city attorney is able to understand this and give us some direction. So, a two-minute recess. So, if you want to go get a drink of water, somebody, discussion for the city attorney and the city manager, we need to bring back item eighteen for consideration, so we need to, I need to get a vote that we can bring back. That had to do with the POA contract, so the chair needs a motion to bring back item eighteen for consideration. Reconsideration, pardon me.
Mayor, this is Councilman Verone. I'd like to make a motion to bring back item eighteen for consideration.
Thank you very much. Councilman, the city manager? Oh, Lee, aye? Excuse me, Lee, aye?
Verone? Aye. Black, yes?
Churchill, yes?
Going Brown, aye?
We have a motion that's approved. Mr. City Manager?
Item number eighteen, ratify the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one agreement between the city of North Las Vegas, Nevada, and the North Las Vegas Police Officer Association for the period of July one, twenty twenty, June thirty, twenty-one. Mayor and council brought to our attention that there was the contract as it was posted before you had one small sentence in it that was not consistent with the contract that was presented and voted on by the officers association. This is, it is Article fifteen, Section two, Paragraph C, and what this was, is that employees would have the option to opt out of dental insurance, vision insurance, and/or cafeteria plan offered by the city, and reduce their health benefit contribution accordingly. So, that's something that was in earlier conversations with the POA. It does not provide any kind of a savings to the city either way, so we were neutral on it, and at the end, it was something that the POA was not in favor of, and it also created some kind of internal challenges within the city. So, we did move away from that, but yet inadvertently it was put in the draft, that this agreement was before you, so, yeah.
Clean copy is correct.
Okay. The clean copy was correct. It was just inadvertently in the red line that was on the agenda. And so, we just want to make sure you all did receive a clean copy, the copy that you received, but just so that there's no confusion for anybody, that the document that was attached to this, that the public saw had it was an earlier draft. Yeah, I didn't, you guys actually voted on, it was clean, but we just want to make sure there's no confusion for anybody that's looking for confusion. So, if you would, we would ask for your consideration to ratify the agreement as amended with Article fifteen, Section two, Paragraph C, removed.
Okay. That will be the motion to accept that verbiage. I, one real quick second, Madam City Attorney, do you, are you in agreement with everything you heard?
So, again, to be clear, the clean copy is correct. The red line, though, shows that that language is in there because it was a last-minute change. So, we're just cleaning up the record so that there's no confusion. In the event somebody's only looking at the red line version.
Oh, that's smart. That's smart. Did everybody understand that?
Yes.
We did. Okay. So, with the verbiage, the city manager read into the record, the chair would like to take a motion, Councilman Churchill?
Be happy to make the motion, Mayor, to revote on this item as amended.
Thank you. So, we have a motion on item eighteen as amended. Lee, aye?
Verone, aye?
Aye.
Black, yes?
Churchill, yes?
Going Brown, aye?
It's unanimous. Thank you very much. Moving on to public forum. Well, Madam City Manager, did you have something you wanted to report on your report?
You know, I did. The funny thing was, is the only thing I was going to say on my report was I was just going to reiterate my thanks to POA President McAllister, to our city, Assistant City Attorney Claudia Guayo, and Chief Ojeda and the team for all the work that they did in getting the contract together. And I don't even need to talk about all that they did, because you just saw how quickly in just a couple of minutes, we were alerted to this as we were going through the last item on the agenda, and you saw how quickly that team was able to really get the information and correct the record. So, just once again, their just now standing team that at a moment's notice is engaged and able to make sure that the business of the city continues moving forward. Just wanted to thank them, and the proof is in the pudding how quickly we had, during the recess, we had calls with everybody that I just mentioned, and got everything squared away. So, just very thankful for our responsive and competent professional team.
Well, compliments to Lauren for stepping in, filling Mike's big shoes, and doing a great job for us. I hear nothing but great things about him, and I know he's prepared and trained, so, Lauren, if you're out there listening, thank you so much for the leadership you provide for your organization, for our city. So, now, moving on to public forum. Now is the time set aside for the public to speak on issues not on the agenda. Remember, council may hear these items, but may not take any action tonight upon any items raised during the public forum. Madam City Clerk, are there any callers or written comments that we need to bring forth at this time?
There were forty written comments that we received over the course of the weekend up until three PM today. Council was provided with those, and they were in regards to Lily, the dog. These comments asked for justice for Lily, expressed appall at how she suffered, and asked for felony charges to be brought against the owner and laws to be changed to prevent this in the future. And then, we also received two comments by Ms. Kennedy discussing slander, and we have two callers on the line.
Great. Thank you. Those will be entered into the record. Madam City Clerk, go ahead and put through whoever you want first, the two callers.
Yes, and Mr. Skipton is still on the line, so if we were going to have more people on the line, we might run out of lines, so.
So, Mr. Skipton, thank you so much. Scott, do you want to add anything to him? I just wanted him to be available.
No, I just really appreciate his support, his tenacity. He's very consistent with his message and support for making our streets safer for pedestrians and cyclists, so thank you so much, Rick.
Thank you very much. Okay, Madam City Clerk, there's one new line for you, and Mr. Skipton's up. We'll move forward with your new callers.
Thank you. Hello, caller. State your name and your address for the record, please.
Elizabeth Garcia, in Briscoe, Texas.
Welcome, Ms. Garcia. Can you state your name, your address for the record, please, so we can have it in a minute?
I'd rather just leave Briscoe, Texas, if that's okay? I understand it's just a preference.
Well, go ahead. We'll listen to you then. If we won't go on the record then, if we don't have an address for you, but go ahead.
Oh, so, okay. What do you mean you won't go on the record? So, is that going to be recorded?
Yeah, it will. Go ahead. You're fine. You live in Texas.
Uh, yeah. I'm from Texas. I thought that would be sufficient enough. I'd like to be recorded. It's just I'm kind of afraid about, you know, sharing my address.
Okay, go ahead. You've got the phone.
Okay. I'm calling the rest of the day because of justice for Lily. You saw the protesters that were out in the front, the recordings that have gone viral have been compelling, and I hate many of them. I want, I know that we have tried to domesticate these animals, to make them, you know, to domesticate them for ourselves, for our own selfishness, and we need to provide love and care for them, and wellness, and attention, and that because we do that, there's also laws, animals exactly like, there are laws to protect children and elderly. The only difference is, maybe animals have a higher standard because they don't have a voice. And what happened with Lily is just a heart wrench, excuse for it whatsoever. The evidence shows clearly that those owners did not care at all for what they were doing to Lily, it was intentional. And because of that, those laws that are set with Nevada are pretty clear, whether it's Nevada, Texas, California, any state, even other states, they're clear. A crime is a crime, and it's not a misdemeanor. This is intentional cruelty. It was barbaric, torturous, and it did not just one day, two days, four days. Everybody, the neighbors heard her crying for help, and no one did anything. Animal control, of course, you've heard many, many times, did not respond. I know this is a mean and sweet, but still, that four days is just embarrassing. I just, I don't know that we in Texas are hearing people not calling and reacting to the service calls after four days. Today's media has no problem showing humans with their brains blasted on the wall, or somebody being killed by an unsanitized group of people, but yet the media said the video was too sensitive.
Okay. We have a kind of a three, we have a three-minute timeout, but we understand. I'm going to have Councilman Churchill just make one point here, that you're waiting for this statement, this neurotomy.
Yeah, Ms. Garcia, that's Councilman Richard Churchill. I know we have another caller on the line, and I know you aren't, you're not here in North Las Vegas, but I did take an opportunity to go downstairs. We did have a large number of people out there, you know, protesting and carrying signs about Lily, and we appreciate that, truly appreciate that. We're all animal lovers over here. I could tell you that right now, the necropsy report, which is the animal version of an autopsy, has not come back yet, so actually, no decision has been made. So, no. In the meanwhile, what we're doing over here, we've spent a large amount of time today, and previous to today, before poor Lily passed away, to update our ordinances and make them stronger in the areas that they needed to be shored up. So, what I could tell you right now, without a report, is that we agree, we understand, and we respect all life. And, you know, we'll make sure that our ordinances reflect that, and when we get the reports from the veterinarian, we'll deal with that accordingly, but we appreciate you calling in, even from Texas, because we have animal lovers all across this country.
Thanks very much. Council, Madam City Clerk, do you have your next person?
Yes, Mayor, I actually have a...
Thank you, Council Churchill. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I will bring in the next person. Hello, caller. State your name for the record, please, and address.
Hello? Hi, my name is Melanie Shane, and my address is one eight five one Balzac Drive, Las Vegas, Nevada, eight nine one five six.
Okay. Welcome, Melanie. Welcome, Melanie. Go ahead.
Hi. So, I am actually in dog rescue, yes, dog trapping in the city of Las Vegas. We are, to me, this case isn't just about Lily, but it's about all the dogs that we rescue on a daily basis that don't get justice. We are consistently, because Animal Control, how do I say this? Because of a lack of follow-up from Animal Control, we have regular citizens in this city, like myself, who go out on a regular basis, scan dogs, pick up dogs. My messenger, my phone gets blown up on a daily basis from people who have contacted Animal Control on multiple occasions because their neighbor left the dogs outside all day, all night, and have gotten no response from Animal Control. So, this is not just about Lily. This is about every dog that has suffered, died, is being left outside, day in and day out, in the cold, in the heat, and we are doing the job of Animal Control for them, normal citizens. This is bigger than just the Lily situation. This is something that needs to be changed in the city and the county and North Las Vegas.
Thank you very much. Well received. Madam City Clerk, do we have anybody else who would like to visit with us?
Yes, you do, Mayor.
Did you give everyone the number?
Hello?
Hello?
Caller, state your name for the record and address. Your three minutes are just about up, though.
Hello?
Hello? State your name and address for the record, please.
This is Gina Grayson with Nevada Vote for Animals. My address should be on record. I, we're out here on the sidewalk...
Madam City Clerk, do we have anybody else who would like to visit with us?
Yes, you do, Mayor.
Did you give everyone the number?
Hello?
Hello?
Caller, state your name for the record and address. Your three minutes are just about up, though.
Hello?
Hello? State your name and address for the record, please.
This is Gina Grayson with Nevada Vote Us for Animals. My address should be on record. I, we're out here on the sidewalk still protesting with the Justice for Lily group. We just wanted to, you know, thank Councilman Richard Churchill for coming out and speaking to us earlier, and I did speak to him a little bit earlier, about 3:00 o'clock on the phone. Our understanding is that the city is going to be looking at strengthening the ordinances. I apologize if you already talked about this, because I've been out here on the sidewalk, and I'm not listening to the meeting except for right now. Looking at the ordinances and strengthening that, but we are fighting for felon animal cruelty, and we appreciate that, as we understand that once the necropsy report comes in, the results and the case will be forwarded to Metro's Felon Animal Cruelty Unit for them to investigate and make a determination on charges. So we appreciate the city being willing to do that as well, and we're very eager to sit down with the city and work on strengthening the language as far as shelter, and also, you know, any of the cruelty language, and we hope that you guys will support any efforts that we have at the legislature as well to change the state law as a whole. And the other thing that we're going to ask is that you please, please, put resources into Animal Control. While we're very disturbed, and we eagerly await the internal investigation into the failures that occurred on August 22nd, when it took way too long, you know, for a response, you know, to respond to Lily, which we said was a felony in progress and urgent, the dog was dying. We also know at the same time that you guys have always, you know, it's been, it's been a tough, you know, 10, 15 years with budget, and we understand that, but these are the frontline positions that go and look at abuse, neglect, not only of animals, but of people. And right now, with COVID, people lock in their homes, there's a lot of domestic violence is on the rise, and, you know, animals as well as children are victims, often of that behind closed doors. So we're asking you to put more resources, not less, into Animal Control as well. Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to be heard.
Well spoken. Thank you very much. Madam City Clerk?
Yes, I have one more caller, Mayor. Hello, caller. State your name and address for the record.
Hello?
Hello?
Yeah, we're waiting, sir. Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. We're waiting for your testimony.
Okay, because someone else is still speaking. I didn't know they were finished. Hey, good evening. This is Jeff Alpert, 3828 Fuller Drive. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, items I wanted to bring up first, at the last city council meeting, at the second public forum, I brought up the fact that I wasn't able to join in on the meeting for quite some time, and I was hoping the city would do something to improve the situation. And I tried to get on at 3:59 today. I tried through the portal, and I tried through the city's main webpage on the portal. I was seeing no indication that a meeting was occurring. Everything was quiet, nothing there to indicate that I should wait. And then on the city portal, there was no tab on the main section of the news section. There were six boxes. None of them, this time, dealt with the city council meeting, but it was listed below in other news and in the calendar section. And when you clicked on the tab to join the meeting, you're getting a message saying file not found, error message. I was on the phone with my friend Steve Chope. We were both trying for five, six minutes. He gave up. I kept continuing. It took me till 4:09 to actually get through on the main webpage, where I actually saw where I can click to go on to the meeting. But I think something needs to be done, and needs to be looked into, why, you know, it's such a struggle to join the meeting. If it says, "Click here to join meeting," you should be able to click and go right to it, and not have to keep trying, trying, trying. The second comment I wanted to make, I heard tonight, how our city manager, Ryan Juden, discussed how the whole virus situation is impacting our budget and our revenue coming in. I think that public entities, the cities, the county, I don't think much attention is being given by the media to the effect. Everything is happening to the cities, what the impact might be. Everybody seems to be in a holding pattern, to see what the federal government does in terms of aid to the cities, and I was pleased to hear from Mr. Juden about what the city has done to have cut back. But I am concerned, I do have one main concern, if you were just a neutral person looking at, you know, our agenda items, on consent agenda tonight, and in previous agendas, it seems like, from the layperson, it's business as usual. There are a lot of expenditures on contracts, and I just think the city needs to study every one of them to see if they can be cut back on. I have nothing against spending on utilities, fire, police, like tonight, $200,000 was approved for ammunition. I'm just wondering if it could have been a lower figure, was that a legal amount? Just what steps are the city taking to cut back now, not knowing where we're going to be months from now? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeff. And I'll go legal three bids on everything. The city manager does a fine job, but Jeff, you're welcome to call the city manager before any meeting and discuss that with him also. Okay, so our phones are open. He'll have time to discuss that with you. Thank you very much. Madam City Clerk?
Yes, Mayor, there is no other callers, and I have no other written comments.
Thank you very much. Well, we appreciate everyone being here tonight and for the public comment that went in place, and we will work on these things. We'll see that the city manager gets on these things. Thank you very much. Meeting's adjourned.